Recording.
This is a meeting of the Hand and Board of Selectmen, June 22nd, 2020. Column meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency declaration we're transmitting by Zoom. I'd ask Carolyn to stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the red color, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justiceful.
Is anyone present recording or anyone at home recording for posterity? Seeing none, continue.
Nine participants.
The meeting minutes of March 16th, regular meeting?
I had suggested that we start to put these meeting minutes up in the cloud for easier review. And maybe a draft folder and then they get slid up into the regular folder, if you will.
Okay. I've got everything up to now in the cloud. We have a, we have a third set of meetings, which I just sent out late this afternoon that Pam gave me. That's the 23rd, Pam?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only a one page. It was a quick meeting.
So do we have any preference for reviewing these tonight or referring them?
Well, we, we've got.
March 16th.
March 16th on, on an outlook, right? And we got, we've got the ninth and we've got the second, right?
Yeah.
And then we have the 23rd that we were just given.
On the 18th. That's the emergency meeting.
And the 18th is the emergency meeting. I think I have that. Okay. Well, I can't say that I read the ones that we just got, but, um, and, but I did read through the others. And the changes were, one of the suggestions I have is, is maybe that when we, when we, when we, that we use full names when we tell people, use people's names and that when we like ES minutes, minutes, well, I know she means executive session minutes, but maybe the public might not know what that means. So rather than, rather than using abbreviations, we do that. But I haven't read them all, so it's hard to, whatever the board wishes to do, they can do.
I thought they were pretty good. They do have a correction for the, on the 16th, for the Union Preservation Commission meeting. There are five members for liaison to the departments and that's for the MGL and also the town general by law. Others are members at large. Two of the members at large appointed by the select board and two are appointed by the moderator. Okay. So I know that, I'm pretty sure Doug and I are appointed by the moderator and the other two are. More was. No, I think Doug and Moore are select appointments and Cindy and John were moderators. Maybe we can run that with Doug.
Cindy and John.
Any other corrections or additions? And if the votes could be pulled those.
Okay.
March 16th, did you say?
It was 16th, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
The March 18th emergency meeting. Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ones we got this evening, we wanted to defer.
I'm just as happy to defer since we haven't read them.
Oh, that's pretty darn short.
Yeah, go ahead.
One page.
Yeah, that's all it is.
The March 2nd?
The March, oh, March 23rd.
Right there, okay.
Pretty straightforward, we discussed this.
Yes. It was held.
There you go.
Okay.
The motions will prove the 23rd, that's the one page.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the other two will, in our lengthy, will look over. Okay, next time?
Okay.
So we approve, so we approve the emergency meeting of the, of the 18th, the regular meeting of the 16th and the regular meeting of the 23rd.
That's all we have right now, although we're almost caught up.
Thanks. Old business, postmortem on the town meeting warrant and the report.
It's a nice way to say it.
What's that? Postmortem?
Yeah.
That's right.
So in my view, I thought the town meeting went really well. It was, we had a little trouble in the beginning with the communication system and stuff like that, so that's something the next.
Well, yeah.
Need to look at to make sure.
I think we now have a list of what, if we're going to go back over there, I know what needs to go.
Is there a charging thing for the microphone?
No. Pam, Pam called. I had asked her to call. We have to, we have to, we, we took them apart. There's no battery. If there's a recharge unit, I didn't, I can't find it. So I don't know how they're, they get power. So then I asked Pam to call up Valley and they haven't called you back yet.
I have to agree with Don. I thought the town meeting went pretty well.
Well, you got everything you wanted.
The sound system was the only problem. Don and I attended the rally, but Friday their sound system was better than what we had.
Now, that sound system is not very old.
No, I think it was the really, the issue was the, because the two mics have to switch off between the two of them. And if the battery's not at the snuff, then they're constantly, it's not sure which one's doing it.
Well, that's fixable. What I need to know is I now understand that what you pass out to those who come to attend the meeting is a list of the warrant articles. I added the, you know, the summaries. But you don't pass out the motions. They, they come separately. And so what I did was those who were on the stage got the motions. I would say this though, if I am a town meeting member and I, I come to the town meeting, the modern warrant, as they call it, doesn't put the amount in the article because that, that can change. But everybody who came into that meeting didn't know what the numbers were for the articles until they arrived, until they were read.
That's unusual because usually that's always in the summary or the explanation. We always say we're accepting the money which is projected to be $290,000 from the state.
Okay, well, that's, okay, I'll do it that way.
I thought, because I thought you already had those in the summary.
And some, but I didn't do it consistently. I just, I, I made sure that the money was in the, in the art, in the motion. And you know, that, the modern warrant makes sense because that number often changes right up until the end. But you know, I guess you can make sure that any number or approximate number is put into the summary. And then those who read it ahead of time will know what kind of money, what kind of money you're talking about.
He hears it at the motion time and he doesn't hear it in advance.
Right, right.
I would hear it. I think that's.
I, I understand what, what we can do now to fix that.
Okay, and on the annual report, we had some printing errors and things like that, so we're repairing that and we're getting a new one out.
Does the annual report have a date that it's usually published by and, and do we start the process too late to attain, attain that date or does it vary each year or?
I think we try to have it by town meeting.
By town meeting.
Yes.
You know.
What we, what we have had in the past, and maybe it's a good, to resurrect it, the town report committee that works, so to speak, for the administrative assistant or selectman secretary back in the day. And get, charge them with starting the process in October or even earlier. I know Pam in the past has started keeping, for instance, the memorial page is kept all year long because of the past. Thanking for service, that's something that's always kept up. What's starting the, I want to say tickle file to remind boards in September, October, hey, start thinking about your end of the year report.
I think that's a very good idea because some departments and boards responded immediately. Some drag it right on out to the end. You can't complete it until you have everybody.
One person checking and doing all the rest of stuff. Maybe you have two or three people helping out. Maybe they come up with the idea for the cover as well, which is even.
Yeah.
Looking to the end for that. I think we have a good chance to ask for some public involvement on that.
Right.
And here's the funny thing, with the dates I'm talking about, we're only three months away from the kickoff.
Well, I think, I think though it's, it's, it's probably good if you pick the distribution date and then back off that. So that you say, we want to distribute it on April 1st or, or, yeah, I think it should be before town meetings. I think people can read it.
Difficult, you know, you go back to old town reports, they've always had a drop in work. So you're pretty much not going to get it before February if you have no.
Well, I don't think you need it before February, but I mean, I just.
So that's your, your back off.
You back, you start here and then you back it off and say, okay, so we need to spend. Whatever. I think that whole process could be, could be cleaned up a little bit.
Previous years, you're right, previous years have been going pretty well with the town meeting being phased into May. Well, it used to be in April, so everybody had it in March, which was reasonable.
Right, right. And this is an unusual year anyway. So I mean, the fact that we have some trouble this year is not surprising, but I mean, I just think that we can do better.
Well.
And we will if we get a committee and we get people responsible for it.
The opening of Town Hall, Senior Center, Library.
You should have a waiver there in the packet, a sample waiver to look at, which is targeted toward the senior centers. It was not in the packet itself. It was a separate handout. Did you pass those out?
Yeah, we have those.
Okay. Alright.
The only concern I have about that is where it says employee.
Yes.
It said employee.
Right.
I don't think we can put that in for the employee because they have certain rights under the CARES Act where they get sick time and they get leave and all that kind of thing. I don't think they can waive that right.
I, I agree with you. I, I, that was sent to me. I asked Rose to, to do that. So that was sent by town council. And I, I think we get into other difficulties if we include employees there. No, that's all. I, it was just for the senior center. But it also includes, I assume that an employee means senior center employees.
I don't think they can waive their, you know, right to get their benefits.
With the library has a good plan to.
So this, what do we do with this?
Just look it over. Let me know if you think it's, uh, needs any changes other than what we just talked about and then we'll print it and make it available.
That question should go back to.
I've shared this with Becky, waiting for her comments.
Go back to Rose, open employees.
Yeah, okay. Alright. The other thing is.
If we're going to open shortly, we have to have this place to open, right?
Correct. We are going to have the custodial staff at Thornton Burgess come here regularly. We're focusing on every two weeks and do the electrostatic spraying of our offices. They're coming Wednesday morning at nine o'clock this week. I've made sure that everyone is available to open their offices or leave their offices open so they can get into every room. And I've also talked to Ed about having a member of the staff, and I guess we could pay them with the COVID-19 money, CARES Act money, come over here more regularly, maybe every day or two and just go over the, the doorknobs and railings and places that people touch frequently. I'm a little bothered by what we've seen so far today. People were coming downstairs after voting, wandering around and not wearing masks. A group of half a dozen young people were in the, in the Whitmore Room, having lunch. No, Melville Room, I don't mean Whitmore, Melville. Whitmore was a senator, wasn't he? It's the Melville Room.
During your, during your time.
Yeah, I know. Just having lunch, sitting very close together, no mask, nothing. So we're going to have to make sure that we have, if you haven't seen upstairs, I think, you know, it's laid out pretty well for the election, but after that, you know, a receptionist, I did have some suggestions of some people that we could get for a receptionist, which Marion gave me, but they are not available. Okay, well, we're looking for, we're looking for someone who can function as a receptionist. The problem with using tax work off employee is that they're, they're short term. So we need someone. And again, we can, we can use CARES Act money to cover that cost. And I think, you know, we're moving towards opening and having the building pretty safe. By the way, you know, the, the focus on, on the sixth is probably it's going to have to be the seventh, which would be a Tuesday. Because the Fourth of July is on a Saturday. I assume that that holiday is taken on Monday. You can't, Friday's a, is, we don't open on Friday anyway, so it has to be Monday. So it would be Tuesday, the seventh as a targeted date to open for employees. Now, assuming we can do well, all is well. We can talk about a date for opening for the public, either a week later or two weeks later. I watch the governor's Zoom conference every Tuesday. It's, it's really worth watching. He's not there mostly, but the lieutenant governor is with announcements from the administration and it's sponsored by the MMA. And so you get good discussion and they go through a lot of questions and details that people have, the questions that people have and a lot of detail on what you need to do, what the best practices are and their, and their view. So they also tell you about grant programs. I mean, everybody, despite what is going to be a tough year, the grant programs don't seem to have been affected. But, and by the way, they announced today that local aid for the first two months of the fiscal year is going to be level funded. So I guess the state doesn't know what their budget's going to be, but we're going to get level funding from the Commonwealth for our local aid programs for the first two months of the fiscal year.
For two months.
For two months, yeah. Then we get whacked. Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's not going to, it's not going to hurt the town. In conjunction with all that, I know you were interested in whether or not the assessors can declare a surplus. I did talk with them today. I did resurrect the letter that I sent and they're going to give a response. They'd like to know what number you're thinking of. Well, I mean.
As big as it can be.
Carolyn said they have $200,000 in the bank and they had that one case. That seems promising for the town, I guess. So you know, they, I'm sure they could part with a hundred easily.
They're, they're experts in what they do.
Yeah. Well, their suggestion was, they did have a suggestion. That was, why don't you wait till next year because it's going to be a tougher year next year. This year, you know, we have a budget. It's in place. It's balanced. And unless we want to increase spending in the fall, we could probably get through this year without an additional source of revenue. Yeah. And so they're suggesting.
They still want to know what their liabilities are, they see.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Well, they, they said there's one case, one case, so.
Can we, can we go back to the opening of the building?
Yes.
We're saying we're going to open the building for staff.
Yes.
When? July 7th?
Yes.
Do I have that correct? And we're going to open it for the public.
Either a week later or two weeks later.
And why would we wait?
Why would we wait? Well, I think we should wait one week just to shake out any problems that we have, like what we saw today.
Sounds fine to me considering that they're having people go to restaurants now.
Yeah.
And I don't know that this would be any more unsafe than going to a restaurant.
Yeah.
You know, so that would mean that they, that it would open to the public on six and seven is the 13th, July 13th?
12.
Correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And for that, and at that point in time, you need the receptionist.
We'd have the receptionist upstairs.
And she would call down to the person.
Yes.
Person's here and walk the person to the site.
Yes. Or I, you know, I was thinking maybe contact the department head and say someone's here. You want to talk to them on the phone? Can you handle this on the phone? If you can't, come on upstairs.
That makes sense. Right. They would play it by ear. Yeah.
I mean, if your alarm is going back downstairs and the wave and after.
That's right. Now, I, I think, you know, we, we do have what, 91 cases now, 92 cases. To protect the people who are in the building as employees, I think it's the safest thing to do to have one reception area and have one department head go back and forth or handle a question on the phone. No. Especially what I saw today, people were fairly casual about social distancing and, and wearing masks.
Well, not every, not everybody takes it as seriously as we do perhaps, and young people certainly don't.
They don't take it seriously at all. No, they don't.
They think we're just having lunch.
Well, yeah.
They don't even.
So. So all those things coming together, you know, I think that as soon as we get a receptionist, I think we're and get, get the sanitization done on, on Wednesday.
It would be open the same hours we are normally open or would there be a limit?
Well, that's a question. That's another question.
You might want to say only nine to 12.
More, more restrictive hours.
Restricted hours? I don't know. Whichever you think works better.
There's time to think about that. I, I was looking at what other towns are doing. Some of them, by the way, seem to be restricting hours, at least in the beginning.
Are we still, we're still looking at all boards having.
Yes.
I don't know if they encourage in terms of, like we're doing here.
Yes.
With Zoom access to the public.
Right.
Okay. Are you pulling one up for every board pretty much?
Not for everyone. I went ask to do it.
Okay, no planning as a meeting.
They have a meeting and they wanted me to post their meeting on the homepage, which I did late this afternoon. And I think they're going to ask me to do the Zoom setup, but maybe not. Maybe not. I was doing Zoom setup for the advisory committee, but now they're using Carol's account. She has a pro account. So they're doing their own setup.
I was going to ask you about that, because we saw the problem.
That doesn't work. No, no. What I would have to do is to, well, we haven't had a conflict. I haven't seen a conflict like that. I did park and rec a couple of times, but they haven't asked me lately.
Now, is, is setting these up very time consuming for you or?
No.
It's easy?
What's time consuming is having a good list of the people.
Who should have the access.
Who should, who should be given the code.
Keep encouraging different boards to keep posting these meetings online. It's no less than, they're going to forget that, oh, by the way, this does need to go on the town calendar as well.
Yes.
I got a message from, well, how do you post their meetings because they don't have. That way the people know the town's business is still going on.
Right.
You know, people are really.
In terms of municipal services, I don't think it's really affected much at all, other than. Right. I'm going to put a robo call out on that. I talked to Eva today about that. Probably tomorrow. She said, I said, do you want me to make it closer to the 29th? She said, no. She said, it's a good reminder. Some people are just, you know, want to let it go and, but I'll get a robo out tomorrow on that. And I think, you know, that's probably.
I wonder if you have a sense, if we have a sense of where we are. Even with the extension, are we at 80%?
I heard one comment on that and that is that the town was collecting its taxes. We didn't change the tax collections. This would just be penalties and interest. Yeah. The comment that I heard was that the tax, tax collections for the regular property tax bills was coming in fairly strong. And that could be, that could be because percentage probably have escrow. Okay, wait a minute. We have a chat question here from. We have, we have a comment from Mr. Clavett. Say, do it by appointment. In other words, I guess he means reta, require people who want to come in and meet with a department head to do it by appointment.
Hey Bob, I thought I heard you said you were going to have a receptionist anyhow.
Yes, we are. We are.
If I was coming to the town hall and I knew that I could get and see somebody at 10 o'clock.
Right. It just comes.
Yeah.
Appointments, appointments might be difficult to manage.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are people. I was watching them at the rear door today. There's a fair amount of annoyance, although people will get used to that. There's annoyance that you couldn't go in the rear door.
For the last three months.
Yeah, so.
Claudia's got a question too.
Claudia has a question.
Hello, everybody. I'm a tax work off and I would be very happy to do the position as a receptionist. I have done, I ran a multimillion dollar orthodontic practice. I think I would be very capable of making appointments and seeing people.
Okay. We'll talk, we'll talk tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Bob.
I think the only issue is, yeah, how much? The, you know, the tax work off program is a short term thing, so we have to figure out something there. Okay.
McNamara trash hauling, July 1st is coming.
I was on the phone every day for the last three or four days.
Didn't sound like here's the contract guy.
It's just about there. It's just about there. I know Rose wasn't, was in touch with Julia Jabber today. They went back and forth on the quality of a scan, which they scanned some terms and conditions. So otherwise, that's, that's coming in for a landing. Next week.
So next week.
So what's going to happen? So the public's going to take all their bins out of there and McNamara is going to.
Correct. Correct.
And on or about July 1st?
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
It's happened before.
Everybody knows. I think we can, we can make this happen, even though it's coming down to the end and it's, it's been fairly frustrating.
We're going to be closed before, I don't know.
Yes.
Alright. Waiver document we talked about.
Yes. Yes.
So Don, I should, that's a question. So June 30th, which is a Tuesday, would be the last day of the current contract.
And they'd have to be out by Saturday so that on Saturday they can have a regular trash, right?
But I mean, they got to.
They'd have a couple of days in there to.
Well, no, Saturday will, well.
Oh, Saturday will close, so they really have a whole week.
That was, I thought, a question we had. I mean, Tuesday is not a full day. So are people going to feel that could you open another? Well, we really can't open on a day because the 3rd is Friday. Make us back to our decision, are we going to close the 3rd or the 6th?
Yeah.
Just where the calendar is this year, so.
But you give them the first and second to go in, get your stuff out. I even the first and second, McNamara gets there and things up.
I think we'll be ready to go maybe tomorrow. If we are, I'll print the agreement and put it in the mailroom. Well, I have to be an optimist.
Clear go.
Uh, I I gave you a handout, uh, we're looking at either the end of the first week or into the second week of July to be operational.
Is that going to have the open checkbook thing feature? That's optional.
I don't know. I think we can, we can do that. I don't know if that would be an additional cost or not. Is that something that the board would like to see happen?
Well, before we decide that, could you give a brief um, one minute overview of what ClearVal is for the audience?
This is a it is a software program uh, that the State Department of Revenue encourages towns to use uh, that will provide a broad range of data on town finances uh, and also provide that to the public uh, over the website. And it will also, I think, the, the real value is you can compare your costs for a particular service with other communities. You know, if you're going to build sidewalk, for example, you can ask the system, what does it cost Camden to build a linear foot of sidewalk? And it'll give you the number. And what does it cost Wilberham to build a linear foot of sidewalk? And you could pick your peer communities, I mean, you can pick 351, or you can pick the ones that you think are most like Camden in terms of population, per capita income and so forth. And so that's the advantage. It gives you comparative data on what your, what your uh, costs are.
And it's available to the public, too.
It is available for the public to use as well, over the website. They can see everything. I mean, it is as transparent as uh, one can be with, with basic financial information.
And and the proposed timeline that they have in here is all set for us, I mean.
We think so.
We think these.
Yeah. Yeah, I communicated with her today. Again. Incidentally, while I'm thinking of this, this is off, off the topic, but I I think there was a comment recently that I was editing uh, part of the discussion. I don't edit your, these videos. I I don't touch them. Once we turn on the recording, uh, that is the recording that gets posted. Now, before I knew how to do basic editing, sometimes I, the recording would come on automatically, and we'd have a minute or two of chatter about the weather or whatever. And then that would be on the, on the video. Now I have it so that we, when he says we're ready to go, I'll say I'm turning on the, on the recording. Once that recording is turned on, I don't edit it. I wouldn't know how, among other things. Okay, I just wanted to clear that up because I know there was some concern.
Does the public need any orientation to this? As to how to use it, or?
No, no, it's amazing. It is very user friendly, yeah, it's not, it's not complicated at all. Uh, in fact, you know, it it is rare that that the state will endorse a particular vendor of software. I only know of two instances, this and they're also, they were endorsing GoToMeeting uh, for, for, and they, they were actually paying for it for three months. So it's rare, and I, I've seen it. This is the third town where we've signed up for it, and I, I think the public, the advisory committee and the board of selection will find it very useful.
All right, sidewalk grant, how are we doing there?
Uh, it's been signed, they are at work. They've submitted a bill.
Well, that's a good sign.
It's a good sign that they're working. So.
Now, this is a sidewalk for?
This is the $25,000 grant that the town received several years ago to design sidewalk uh, on Summers Road uh, from the senior center down to the commercial district there. I know it's controversial and it may not get built, but.
So this is just the design?
This is just the design. They're not putting any concrete down, uh, so. But if you recall, um, we wanted to reorient to uh, the sidewalks around here, and they said, no. They said, either spend it on the design or give it back, so. We're doing the design. You have the design, at some point it may be uh, desirable to uh, to build it.
All right, municipal vulnerability?
Uh, that, that proposal is in. We're waiting on the word from the state. There was an email that passed in that I got today from Mary Monahan to the secretary saying, when can we expect the decision?
And this is for the sidewalks?
No, this, this would be, no, this would be to do a plan townwide.
Oh, okay.
For those areas of town that are vulnerable to severe weather incidents, mo- mostly flooding. And the focus, I think, is going to be what, once you've done the plan, then you can apply for funding. And I think the focus of the funding would be Big Brook, Eastbrook, where they flow into the Scantic and where they've had flooding in the past. Yes, that's exactly right. Yeah, exactly right.
All right, uh, classification compensation.
That's also going forward. Uh, in your packet, you have the list of town employees who have filled out the form, which we've sent in to Collins. And there's a message in there, too, I think, from uh, Libby.
The question I have about that, this fellow, is you have on the list, um, is this the list of people who sent it in?
Yes.
So, just you've got uh, the treasurer, the town treasurer.
Yes.
But the town treasurer is an elected position.
Yes.
As is the town clerk, so I don't know if that's.
But they asked, do you want to include that? I said, well, let's, you know, just give us, give us the information, it might be useful to the town. So. And there are, there are some, a few more, since I, when did I do this? Right before the weekend. I got the accountant in today.
So they send questionnaires out to all the employees.
Correct. Yes.
And I read the thing, it said, think of it as if you're not the employee, but you're someone who was looking at this, uh, what you.
Right.
And then they follow the telephone survey.
Correct, yes. And then they, they, yeah, they interview them.
Right, and then they look at comparable towns for salaries.
Correct.
Job.
Yeah.
And that stuff, and they give.
Yeah, yeah, what the, what the market rate would be for a particular position in this region.
This is all being paid for with the.
This is $17,000, yes, it would not cost the town anything to have this done.
And what was the due date for the questionnaires to get back?
Uh, we didn't establish a due date, I just remind them when we meet. I think we're, we're pretty much getting there.
Okay, are there many missed? I was just.
No, no, uh, she's going to start interviewing uh, the COA employees. So that's complete. Cliff got his in today. Uh, you know, I think I'm just going to keep an eye on all this. It's, by the way, in the highway department, there are only two positions. There's the director, and then everybody else. It's all, they're all in the same position. So we want different, independent position, different positions.
Fire station feasibility.
Not in yet, I talked to the chief today. It hasn't arrived, so. Conservation agent.
We're going to go back to fire station.
Yeah. Yes.
Pointing and the other three.
Pam was going to do those.
Conservation agent.
Right. Uh, July 14th, interviews. It's been fairly frustrating, as you know. Hope we can get a good candidate.
And do your transfers too early?
Uh, I talked to Cliff, he said, no. He likes to wait until the last month. Yeah, yeah, they don't, they don't close the books until the 15th of July. Process is the selected vote first on any transfers, but these are going to be very minor. And then the advisory committee has to concur. So. Changed a little bit since. It's in the back of your packet. Last page. Pardon? You should have, you should have the listing that I compiled for remaining vacation time. Yeah. Yeah, you should have it.
So you're just questioning.
I printed it. I'll tell you what, when we break up the meeting, I didn't think you were going to act on it tonight. I'll give you copies to take home. I printed it.
Well, we sort of have to act on it tonight, don't we? Well, I mean, if, if they have, I mean, some of the options that we would have would be for them to use the vacation time between now and the end of Ju- of July, of June
Yeah.
to carry over for so many days into July. You eliminate your, your options if you don't have, if you don't have.
Okay, let me get.
To require anybody to use their time before the end of the fiscal year is unacceptable.
Yeah, some can't do that.
So we have a choice of either buying out the time based on how much it is, or lying on the carryover. So say employee X has two and a half weeks because of the COVID, whatever, didn't get a chance to use. Fine, we'll let you carry over one week and we'll buy out a week and a half, which, to be honest, Bob, and I think it mentions to you, is there a shot at it being reimbursable because, only because of this emergency, they couldn't use that time?
I don't know. That's a good question for the conference tomorrow. Uh, let me just get you the copies that I know I have in here.
This is Alan Fritz. We have some kind of musical interlude while we're with the people who are at home, you know?
You want them to leave?
No, 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 I.
Music, no singing, John.
Like they have, you know, like when you call your doctors often, they say your call is important to us. Please hold.
So, I mean, Lolly's printing that out. Does the board have a sense of what I proposed? With a week to go telling, okay, you're going to have to use those two vacation days next week.
Well, I think it depends on how many days we're talking about for each person, and, and the cost of, of the situation and.
So that's.
Unfortunately, we don't have a dollar amount with any of these.
No.
Is that going to be difficult to add in?
No.
What, what, what you're, what you said, when you say 13 days, that means that you have 13 days left, or that?
Yes, 13 days remaining. No, I mean, this, this can be refined more in terms of costs. I asked everyone last, well, at the staff meeting last week to figure it out and send it, so I just got this information recently. There is an issue here, though, and we don't track it centrally. I think we should track it centrally.
Absolutely.
It's tracked by department.
I mean, some of these are pretty minor, some of these are pretty huge.
Yeah.
Yeah. And really gets down to were a lot of these because of the emergency. I mean, many of these people may have, I was going to go on April vacation with the kids, and that didn't happen.
Yeah.
Therefore, that was the way. We have a, I'm pretty sure, although I don't think that's true necessarily of the contracted positions, but we use a, we are a user or loser.
Yeah. And with personal days, that's the, that's the, that is the policy.
Lose it, use it, or lose it.
Yes.
But with extending circumstances we have in the past, a lot of people, okay, I couldn't go because I had a man in the park here, therefore, can I carry over a week? All right, fine. I would think in the rest, we just lose. But I would think if you had a reasonable case that I couldn't use any of this time because we were off with that pandemic, we couldn't go anywhere. And if we could afford it, we should pay off some of that time.
Well, and, and talking.
Dollar amount would be important, you probably get that, I'm here working right there.
Talking with Cliff this morning, we have some resources. For starters, $25,000 in the reserve that hasn't been touched.
Yeah, typically, reserve of cover is not used for salary item. And I'm not sure if that's a rule or a policy.
Oh. There's about 30 in the TA account.
So 50.
Our, our, our personnel manual says that, doesn't, am I correct that it says that you can't carry vacation days over?
Right. But if, with, with permission of the, of the board, I mean, it's pretty negative about carrying over, but you have to have a vote of the board of selection to do it.
The one issue I would have, Tom, is here, if you look at the vacation now, that some people can get up for five weeks, and then you let them carry over in three weeks, I mean, really, do they need eight weeks? Or would they appreciate maybe a check for three weeks and even five weeks? Look, I've gone through something. I don't know, some of the employees, maybe we don't want them away for eight weeks upon year.
How, I, I think that the whole way the vacation work seems a little bit um, casual, if that's the word I want to use, okay? It, it seems to me that they should go through the town administrator, he should keep track of what the days are. If a person has not been taking their days, he should say, you know, you got to take some of these days because you're running out of time and you're only going to have, you know, whatever number. But to allow them to accrue like this with no um, can be, I think can be very costly, and you're really almost it just doesn't feel right that you would pay people.
But this, this is very unusual. Again, you look at the people here, you see the top Pam being out here, look at the next five, the senior center where they've been closed. You know.
Yeah.
It, it, this is so off the norm.
Yeah, but I mean, if she's, if she's working from home, why shouldn't she just take vacation days, is my point. You know, she didn't have to go into work, so couldn't she have said, okay, I want to take the first week of June off?
I think because these people are, they're diligent, they wanted to work, they knew the work needed to be done.
But they have more work to do at home than they had to do when they were in here? Well.
Well, everybody, you know, everybody has a, a different arrangement. I think, yeah, as part of the, what we're doing with HR, we can centrally track. Also, we'd have to have pay rate. And we'd have to convert everything to uh, have to convert the hours. Also, we'd have to have pay rate and we'd have to convert everything to, have to convert the hours or, or, or the days, one way or the other. And then figure out what the, the total will be. If you're going to allow a week and then buy out and do a buyout, so.
I mean.
Yeah, Becky has a lot.
Hi, this is Becky. I'm, I'm on the call. My, my anniversary date changed this year, so my five, my five weeks was given to me on November twenty-sixth of last year. And at that time, I had been approved for a five-day carryover from the previous year, so I used that week. And then I was going to take February and April vacation with my kids and probably some time in June, but all of that got canceled. So I wouldn't have had that much, given the pandemic. But, but my anniversary date is changing to July first this year, so that's why. It looks like I have a lot because my anniversary date has been November twenty-sixth since I started seventeen years ago. And just with the rewrite of the, of the employee handbook is, is why I'm transitioning to July first.
Thanks, Becky. Uh, can you just, I think, John, I need a dollar figure on this. Like, can you figure everyone's pay? Give us a dollar figure. Go from there. That would be next week.
Well, again, it seems to be the warrant that would be the last one.
Yeah.
And then it's part of the same process. Think about how you want to do.
Centralize.
Centralize this whole process and what's going to happen, whether it's computerized or.
I think we track it. We track it on the individual weekly time sheets. You know, we have a full vacation allotment and then we whittle it down for everybody.
I thought it was two because he was coding it based on the time sheet.
Yeah, okay.
I'm taking this day as a vacation day, this day a sick day, and we've got two work days.
Yeah.
I know in my paycheck for them at work, once you punch it in there and you're paced up the following week, it shows how many sick hours you have.
Right, exactly. That's what I was teaching you.
What else you have there?
Uh, what else do I have? Well, it's a little late. We, we got the, we got a new email address for the clerk for absentee voter applications. It'll be useful next time. We did submit a second round of the CARES Act reimbursement, but I got a message back from state offices of administration finance that they're going to pay that out in the next round. I don't know when the next round is going to be. There's a rumor that it's going to be in October, so. McNamara, we've been through waivers. We've been through town hall opening. We've been through custodians doing sanitation of the town buildings. The new office, if you haven't seen it, is looking good. Question would be who moves over there? We probably, the, the office that would probably be most in need of reducing staff would be the clerk's office where they have three. Delayed. There's an email from him last week. He was optimistic that they were coming in relatively quickly. Now they're not. They're backordered. The new office, anyway, is, is really attractive and decision's going to have to be made as to who goes there. Assessor's surplus, we talked about next sanitation Wednesday. Candidates for conservation agent on the fourteenth, liquor applications, you have the, what we have. I gave you that compilation. Yeah.
So these are for outside for Geo Street, Geo Pizzeria, Lacochina, Casabella, I believe, and the Mountain View. But I don't think there's, I'm going to sort of let her outside on the tent. Is that your plan?
That's what you talked about last week, that we're going to have fencing and only get into the tent.
Kind of back building road, fire department.
Casabella, is it any different than the patio they have now or are they looking to expand?
They've expanded in front, between the building and the street, between the building and Summer Street. You'll see they got tables and chairs there. I didn't think that that looked particularly attractive, but. And, and you're going to be sitting next to the highway, so cars are going to be buzzing by and I would have thought that maybe going on the other side of the building and putting up some kind of barrier, maybe some plantings. I'll take a lot casino. Yeah.
They're going to the parking lot, right?
I have not had any communication with them. I was thinking of La Cucina. You, you've seen that.
Just says they want to use the patio.
We're not using the parking lot the whole table. Sticking to what we're doing anyway.
So what they have out there now is what they.
Yeah.
Off the stick, I, Mountain View, wants to have a tent in back and they're going to have fencing around the tent, like a beer garden.
Yeah, right, right.
And I think you mentioned last week, everybody there is tab certified.
We're going to have eight victim tables out there and eight in back. That's their flawed plan. They'll pick compliance, A, B, C, C guidelines. Reed's Connor, they don't serve liquor Reed's Connor, right? So they don't need a. They just want to use, they're just showing where they're using. They had to get approval to use the sidewalk for their tables.
So, I mean, presently they have, what, two or three tables typically on a Sunday? Do they want to go further down basically with tables?
Yeah.
So all of these that we're looking at have been vetted by Lori at this point?
Lori, I checked on Lori, the fire department.
Yeah.
And the, the building inspector.
Yeah, they just came in to me yesterday. Yeah.
To me, the only one that's really abuggable, unfortunately, Geo, that he's crossing the fire lane. So there you're into really sign off by the police and sign off by fire.
Right.
If not, it's a tense thing. You see Maxburger has the same thing.
Yeah.
But again, it's the fire lane designation. If they sign on.
They've done.
But she did sign on.
Yeah, they're putting the tents there on the plaza there in Posto and Maxburger have big white tents.
And the fire department and Lori and the building inspector have signed off on the fire lane.
So, does get back to the planning board, does think, how many spaces is he taking over with the tent? I mean, you get into that whole thing about the use of the mini mall, and we have parking spaces and where there are no spaces.
He's not taking any parking spaces. He put the tent right in front, across the fire lane up until the.
Medium.
Little median. Like.
Over the grass?
No, no, up to the grass and he's got cement barriers around it.
Yeah, that's all up now.
That's all up now.
Yeah. Actually, he's not really taking much space.
So here, here's.
Yeah, so he is on the other side, yeah. So he's in the parking place.
Well, it's not that time we were built now.
That's not how it's built now.
Well, I mean, this is the island, which is where you're treating, you know.
I know, the map it shows is not, is not where you built.
Because this looks to me like it's like the first.
Yeah, here he is. Here's the, the package for Duncan Don. And his tent is here up, up to that island. This is not what he.
I mean, this, if the parking workout would be, you know, okay, you know, on the server, you're, you know, hustling my garage. This makes more sense. This is what's on now.
He's got from here, sidewalk to here, to the island, is the tent.
Covering the fire lane?
Yeah, and he's got cinder, he's got cinder block, he's got cinder block, like Jersey barriers.
They look like wide Jersey barriers.
Well, they're up there and they had.
Lori said it wasn't really cutting off the fire.
No, it is. Well, they, they said that the, the distance that. I talked to the fire chief and then said that the, between the this, here and here, the equipment couldn't fit anyhow. And that if there was a fire, they could easily reach it with the hoses.
You need to rethink the fire line, or you should go and get smaller trucks?
Maybe get many trucks.
That's a clarification of this, this picture. Honestly, I'm happy with this picture.
Yeah, yeah, makes more sense.
Right.
So.
Well, I thought about trying to apply for some of this grant money. Problem is you'd have to assist all of them. Yeah, this is Mr. Clifford.
There was somebody that ran into one of them barriers last night, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody ran into a barrier. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And I don't want to hold these people up. I would say I'm happy with the ones.
Casabella is definitely going to do what they're going to do. The, yeah, Reed's is no liquor license. The other ones have been approved by, by the Board of Health and then, so, but we, we should clarify what, what, what the COA is doing here.
So, but I mean, move them along. Do you want a motion to approve the ones that were good with, or at least otherwise we're not waiting till next week?
Okay, then we'll get out and see.
I'll move the, move approval of the plan for Lacochina.
Reed's.
Whatever the name of company was. Okay, with some of the.
Now they're.
I would make, make a motion for conditional approval of Geo if their plan matches the submitted.
And does not impact the, you know, the filing. Or ha, with the, with the recommendation of the, of Laura McCall or somebody, the fire department and the fire chief.
No, I would, I would recommend approval of the plan as submitted.
Okay. All in favor?
Okay. Now, the last two items are for the COA. Becky's proposing the July fourth schedule to be offset. And she's also, I sent you the message that she's interested in doing a furlough for the activities coordinator. Since that's grant-based, grant-funded and the grant is being reduced. Apparently, this is agreeable and it would be for two months. Are you still on, Becky?
Yes, I am.
Did I describe that correctly?
Yes, you did.
You said that's, that's correct. Two-month furlough, so.
Would you like to be a receptionist? The question, I have two, uh, two questions about the furlough issue. If it's a grant.
Yes.
Who does she work for?
It's a formula grant and she works for the COA.
Okay, so if we furlough the person, she could collect unemployment.
That's my understanding.
Okay. If she collects unemployment, we're self-insured, so we, the town would be paying that. The grant wouldn't be paying that.
No. Becky said, Becky, didn't you say you, you expect to get a grant, but it's going to be reduced?
Yes, that's correct. Currently, we receive twelve dollars per elder, which is, we have right now, based on the two thousand ten census, is thirteen hundred and forty-seven older adults in the town of Hampton. Certainly, that will change when we get the twenty twenty census results. But our rate right now is twelve dollars per elder. The state hasn't set a number yet, but we are bracing for probably nine fifty an elder. Or maybe ten dollars. So there will be a decrease in that line item and I probably won't know what that is, obviously, until state budget comes out, but.
Is there any chance of applying for, I hate to say it, CARES relief? Because this loss of an employee or at least paying the unemployment is directly because of this.
You want to try. These are the kind of questions that pop up in the, in the lieutenant governor's sessions on Tuesdays, by the way. We'll see if they can give us an answer on that.
Define it correctly, but you see where I'm going with.
Yeah.
Et cetera.
Yeah.
So now we're paying unemployment, which we wouldn't have to. When you reimburse, almost the better. She's made a hole, we're made a hole.
Well, let's see what they have to say. So those are the remaining issues.
So Becky, would you need a decision on that?
It's, you know, whenever you have a decision is fine. There's no, you know, set time. I had, I had mentioned perhaps July and August because I figure by September, we might have numbers from the state. But, you know, whenever you can come up with something.
So, we can get this squared away by next week. We'll do the vacation. We'll do all that stuff. Right?
Now, that's, that's a wrap.
I have an issue I want to bring to the board that I'm seeking permission to get clarification. I sent a letter of clarification to either our regional school, school representatives and director of regional school. On June eleventh, the regional school committee voted to create a transportation reimbursement.
Yes.
To which they wanted to put the one point two million dollars in unspent funds. That they would then use that towards transportation, paying transportation. I have two questions I need to ask them. First of all, the way the legislation is written, they may not be able to put unspent monies in there. They can only, they may only be for reimbursement received from the state for transportation. The second thing is that the, it says that if the money, funds are carried over from the previous fiscal year, those funds must offset the next year's fiscal transportation assessment. So if they put the money in there, are they going to have to offset next year's transportation assessment, which is four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars?
Good question. I mean, I agree with the thought of it because the problem with the E and D, you have to have one year layover. So that was, looking at the revolving was clearly the right thing to do. Your point is make sure that you're doing it for purpose, that actually can be spent for that purpose.
Spent for that purpose. And don't get yourself on a box that you're going to end up, you know, losing the money. Because they want, they originally wanted to put it into pay advanced collaborative. But I thought if they put it in this kind of discussion I listened to, was that if they put it in here, they could get some interest in the meantime because they could, we didn't pay, you know, the quarterly assessments. And then the help offset also, you know, they're all going to care when people, they're going to take a pretty good hit. I mean, chapter seventy and seventy-one, you know, so. But I'm reading this, I'm saying, you know, if, if it says the funds carry over the previous fiscal year must be used to offset the fiscal transportation assessment for next year, then I just want to get a clarification. So I'm sending them up to them. By the way, the vote on that was four to three, the, our two representatives voted against it. Did I, only because they too had some questions about it and it came up suddenly, so.
Yeah.
All right, so I just want to, I'm sending them, I'm sending them. All right, so I just want to, I'm sending, I'm sending a note and get a clarification.
Okay, one other point I'd like to make, the board, I'd like the board to recognize Subanel Service.
Yes.
And congratulate Phil and Brandon. Former COA, COA Director in Hamden, resident in Hamden as the newest person on the board in Waukegan.
Okay.
And, and the other. I, I sent an email to Eva and to Bob. I was very impressed with the young people who turned out today to help register the elections. So I wanted to make sure we got them a letter or some kind of certificate of appreciation in the board recognition.
Right. Okay.
In further discussion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?